We need to stand up.
Welcome. We'll start with the pleasurable audience.
I have a pleasurable audience.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome to the CIP Capital Planning Meeting for the town of Reedfield. And this is a joint meeting with the Select Board and the Budget Committee. It's a more or less of a workshop where we'll be looking ahead at our plans for capital investment over the next few years. And of course, that directly relates to the current budget. We'll start by just introducing ourselves. We'll start with you, Eric, and then go through the Select Board, and then Andy, I'll hand it off to you.
Eric Dyer, Town Manager.
Ralph Eno, Select Board.
Catherine Mills Woodson, Select Board.
Chris Salmon, Select Board.
Bruce Pergoing, Select Board. And Andy, if you want to say a word or two, and then your group.
Well, Budget Committee is pleased to be here talking about the big things. We also focus on the little things, but it's nice to look at the big picture now and then. My compatriots need a help.
Ed Sims, Budget Committee.
Rebecca Ellen Burke, Budget Committee.
Marty Hanisch, Budget Committee.
Ellen Schneider, Budget Committee.
Theresa Shaw, Finance Officer.
And I want to thank every single member of the Budget Committee for volunteering. That's really important, and at this time of year, it's a fairly involved job, and you do a great job. The capital meeting planning goals are pretty straightforward. We're going to take a look and have presented to us capital investments for the upcoming fiscal year '21 and five years beyond. I'm not a big fan of necessarily locking into five-year plans or 10-year plans. I think those things are somewhat flexible, but we'll be taking a good look ahead. And we're going to listen and hopefully answer whenever possible any budget capital-related plans, questions, and concerns, and comments. We don't have members of the public with us tonight. That's not intentional, they're just not here. So we'll try to make sure that we have a robust conversation so that the kinds of questions citizens would ask do get asked. We'll hear any recommended changes to the capital investment plan and take a look and discuss our policy directions and objectives. So without, unless you want to add something, I'm going to turn it over to Eric Dyer, who's going to basically walk us through some of the documentation that was sent out in advance, and we'll have some discussion.
All right, thank you, Bruce. I'll start just by giving a quick summary of the packet that's in paper form here so folks can see what's included and what it means. The first several pages are the actual slides from the presentation for this evening. This is where we talk about the main items and the short-term outlook. This is where I hope to focus much of our attention. However, we do have other things that we can and will, I'm sure, discuss. Behind that, we have our full, well, not our full, but a much more complete version of our capital investment plan spreadsheet. It does go out five years. However, there's 20 years beyond that in some cases and more, depending on the nature of the asset that we're talking about. But the column that we're currently working in is highlighted, and that's the fiscal year 2021. And these are broken down by category with, it's not necessarily consistent with how our accounts are structured, but that's something we've got to work on in the future. But these are a fairly complete listing, these two pages of the assets, that we've identified as needing review and consideration for future spending. Beyond that, we have two pages which represent both the estimate for fiscal year 2021, reserve balances. And so these are reserve balances, not just for capital, but for capital and other departments, other operating reserves. And so I just wanted to point out that the '21 sheet is in the front, the '20 sheet is in the back. FY '20, as you know, we're only halfway through, or a little bit more than halfway through. So there are a lot of estimates and projections in these numbers that get us to a point where we can have some reasonable, I guess, assurance that the balance at the end of FY '21 is, should be pretty close. It all depends on how much money the departments spend. Just a quick summary on this, you'll notice that some of the items are in red. That is recommended consolidation of accounts. If you look at the prior year FY '20, we have probably five or six more accounts than in the FY '21. And one of the things we're striving to do is consolidate these accounts so that we have fewer reserves that are easier to manage, and particularly trying to streamline things so that if we have an account that has an operating budget and a capital budget, that we have an operating reserve and a capital reserve. So trying to build some consistency in as we move forward with that. The calculations on how this comes together, I can get into at some point if you'd like me to. But generally, some, the first couple of columns are additive, and the later columns are subtracting from those values. So it's just a bit of a balancing to show, in many cases, what goes into an account, what comes out, and what the remainder is. And the final sheet in the packet is our long-term debt by fiscal year. And I want to thank Catherine for bringing this to my attention, that this really ought to be part of our capital planning discussion because if we're not saving for it outright, we're probably bonding for it. So it's very important to have that information in there if we're going to have a discussion for more than, more than the current fiscal year. So that's my, my quick run-through of the packet. Any questions on any of that before I move on to the specific departments that we're looking at?
Real quick, operating reserve for existing line items. Why wouldn't we simply budget based on projections for a given fiscal year and hopefully be on target and not need a reserve to start with? Isn't that, isn't that, for want of a better description, isn't that kind of piling on? You're building a reserve in an operating line item?
Well, yeah, so absolutely, that's a good point. Certain departments have more variability in them. And during our town meeting votes, we regularly set certain departments and accounts as carry-forward. And very often, those departments are primarily operating or might be split between operating and capital. So it's a combination of the way we've intentionally established carry-forward accounts. Always, we look at those accounts and recommend their usage during the subsequent fiscal year if it's appropriate or necessary. Most accounts don't have an operating carry-forward. The ones that do typically have for a reason, like, for example, cemeteries or trails have carry-forwards because a lot of the work they do is split pretty evenly between April, May, June, July, August, and September. So having that does give some flexibility to them as far as completing projects. That being said, the way things have been done doesn't mean they have to stay that way.
I have some reticence about building reserves into operating lines because I think when you do that, it obfuscates your actual history fiscal year to fiscal year. And I noticed that when I voted on the budget last year, a whole bunch of these operating lines automatically encumbered unexpended balances. And I frankly, to be honest, have a problem with that. I think if a line item is under-expended, that, that unexpended balance goes back to the undesignated fund. And we have discretion in terms of expenditures over and above what an appropriated line item will be within, within a certain amount that should build that cushion in without building in an automatic reserve and encumbrance on an operating line item when you're voting on a budget.
What would you do for trails? What would you do for trails? They can't spend their money before the year ends.
But if we have a history of July to June, operating expense, why can't that line reflect that, that load and the demand? So in the winter, basically, there's, there's no expense. But come June, sure. And then what you do, you don't, we don't close the books June 30th. If there are unexpended but encumbered costs at that point for trails, when you close the books in August or September, that money is still there. I don't think you need to encumber, you just, I think there's a, there's a cleaner way to do this than having a whole host of line items that are automatically encumbered without, without reflecting actual experience.
Well, they, they have cut them back.
And it's not necessarily a function of cutting back, it's a question of, of looking at what the plan is for a budget year, when you anticipate the expenses to be incurred. And yeah, sure, if you're doing it in June, and, and you, and those, and those bills won't be presented until August or September, a budget note says, please, here's, here's my anticipated overage, which is actually represented in the previous year's budget, we would like to encumber those funds. And you do it on a needs basis versus a projected basis where you don't have experience.
Any other comments or thoughts?
This is clean, it works, it passes muster with the auditors, but you have a whole host of line items that are automatically encumbered when you vote on your budget. And there's no indication at that point in time when you vote that those monies will actually be needed. And if they're not, they should go back to the undesignated fund balance, to my way of thinking.
So I, please do.
My understanding of that column that says use of carryover to reduce budget is that that heading is sort of a consolidation of two things. First, technically, the unexpended balances do go back to the general.
To the fund balance.
The general fund balance. And then when the Select Board and ultimately the residents approve the budget, they're, they're really approving two things. A, it goes back to, to unencumbered, and B, it gets appropriated to an operating account. So I think it's sort of shorthand, but I think in reality, technically, it's really doing, doing it the way that you would like to see it. I think it's doing it that way, although this is sort of shorthand for that.
Alan.
I agree with Marty. I mean, we do go through each of these lines and we'll say, they never spent the money last year, why do they need it this year? Or next year, whatever year it is. And so that discussion occurs, and Eric doesn't always end up with what he proposes.
Sure, that's because you're doing your job.
There was something you said in one of your remarks that made me think you want us to switch to accrual, which is not how we account for expenses. Okay, I thought you said, well, if we know we're going to incur it in August.
I just, I just think that, by specific lines, for example, trails, the expenses incurred in June, the invoice isn't coming until August. That's when I think an approval for an encumbrance into the next fiscal year, that's when you should do your carry-forward.
And so to the point of how we approach this, I mean, we do have the current recommendations. The Select Board ultimately has the authority to decide what goes on the warrant and what, what is put forward as a carry-forward account. So I think that that's a good discussion to have here, I think, to at least start it. But with specific lines, when we have that warrant discussion, we will see every, every one that is set either as a capital or an operating carry-forward. And so we can have that discussion as well in just determining what we decide to carry-forward and whatnot. We've been going on past practice, so.
We're way too far down the road in the development process to make a wholesale change at this point, but I would respectfully request that maybe we begin to look at the process in terms of encumbrances and automatic carry-forwards in terms of budget transparency.
Well, I, I've certainly taken a note of this. I think we probably should get on to the categories now.
I've taken up way too much time on.
No, that's.
Out of pet peeve.
Can I interrupt for a quick moment?
Yes, please do.
Could you give us the Internet password, please, Eric?
So the Internet is unfortunately down. I did talk to the IT. They said they were going to fix it before the meeting, and they did not. So I apologize for that. Internet went down yesterday, and then.
It never came back?
It never came, well, I mean, it came back, but there was an issue with the router. And then the router got tweaked by the, the IT was trying to fix something, and they broke something else.
We'll move on to cemeteries. Let's bury that topic.
Which is quite appropriate.
So we do have annual savings for capital, and it's been ongoing in this, in the cemeteries for several years now. We typically do put aside $5,000. I want to point out also that this year, this does not necessarily affect the capital reserves, but it can affect our perpetual care funds, that there is $5,000 being used to offset, actually, I think it's, is it operating cost this time, Andy? Is that right?
It's stone repair.
Stone repair.
Which we felt made sense for perpetual care.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. So that certainly would meet the criteria of a capital expense being $5,000 and having a long lifespan.
We hope.
We hope, yes. Long-term, we don't have anything immediate. We do have some, I guess midterm would be the five-year horizon. Longer-term, we have some unknown expenses that, we don't know when they're going to come up. We do know that we need to save for them. $130,000 is the estimate for the wall repair at Reedfield Corner and Case Cemetery, and $7,500 for an access road at the Reedfield, East Reedfield Cemetery, which is the one by the Jesse Lee Church. So those are the two items that I see in the five-year horizon. And I wanted to just, I think with each of these categories, I will ask if there's anything else that you feel should be addressed in the next five years or in the current fiscal year that we haven't looked at.
I do have a question about the Reedfield Connor Cemetery, the granite wall, which is kind of one of the faces of town, well, because it's, it's a huge item. Was that, did we have an engineer look at that? Or?
Informal, yes, yeah.
About five or six years ago, and we've been doing what we hope are long-term, short-term fixes, trying to get the water away from the front of it, which is part of the problem. And also, we have kind of a systematic, slow-moving, repointing project going on to stabilize it. We hope never have to replace it.
You cheer, you cheer the cemetery.
Yes, yeah, I'm there too.
Okay, I just.
What does Case need?
Its whole front wall is icy. It's not as bad as Reedfield Corner.
But it's good, it's good now.
If you get the wrong kind of freeze-bath, it could all tip over. That's what the engineer told us anyway.
Probably true.
And I will say that from what I've seen with the work that we've done on the drainage in front of the Reedfield Corner Cemetery, that has had a drastic impact in reducing the amount of standing water that we have. And so I think that those little things that are low-cost have and will continue to pay off in stabilizing that, that wall. All right, anything else on cemeteries?
I'm good.
The library. The new roof for the library should be complete by June. We did have a pre-construction meeting for the joint fire station, library project. They do want to get that roof done sooner rather than later. A lot of that has to do with the weather. They want to make sure that they get it done before the thunderstorms roll through, take away some of that unpredictability. That's great because it'll fit neatly into this fiscal year. The fire station project will not. It's going to extend, split the two years, and we're going to, you know, need to address that with our auditors and also just functionally. Cash flow, we're fine, but we'll talk about that later. So that project is going to be completed. But we also have in FY '21, a secondary appropriation, $25,000 for contingency funds in the event that something does happen at the library, that the roof may need to be lifted up a little bit, or if there's another issue they discover when they're opening up the building. Also to address egress and interior work for the building. About half of what we had originally discussed has been partially completed, or has been completed through the use of grant funds. We originally had intended to have heat pumps as part of this process. The library felt that that was a priority for them, so rather than hold on to the grant funds for another purpose, they expended $20,000 roughly, maybe a little bit less, $15,000 probably, to install two heat pumps in the building this spring, prior to the summer season. So they actually kind of took, took that and moved that piece forward. But we still have work to do, and we still have some unknowns, so we did feel it appropriate to put that $25,000 into, into the FY '21 budget. The five-year horizon, we do also have an annual reserve being put forward. It is an old building. I think we might be able to reduce that to a couple thousand dollars. I'd like to see where we are after we expend the 25 that we're going to be putting into it, or potentially up to 25 that we'll be putting into it this year, and, and see where that leaves us with needs in the future. So that reserve, I think, is appropriate, but the level might need adjustment. And then unknown, the library parking lot paving, I think $10,000 is probably low. It's probably going to be close to $15,000 or $20,000 at least, so that number could use in adjustment. But honestly, I think the gravel lot we have works pretty, pretty well. It drains very well, it has a good hard surface most of the year. So if it's not broken, I'd say we can get away with, with not paving it until.
When was that item added? Or has that been?
It's been there for quite a while, yeah.
Okay. I had a resident approach me on this, and it was the first time in five years. Well, actually eight, if you include my library board trustees' term.
So you're asking what, and what were they, they wanted to say?
Approached me about, why don't we pave that? And I do see a little bit of an issue. I actually think the gravel approach is probably the best. But I do see a little bit of an issue with perhaps, in the long run, with maybe paving, a stripe up for handicap access, parking and entry, or something of that nature. But I, I don't really want to see that parking lot paved, I don't think.
Yeah, I'm with you. I think that it's a very well-functioning gravel lot. So, but the idea of handicap parking, I don't recall if there's a sign there or not, but if there's not, we should be putting in. So I'm going to make a note to check that. And if we don't, we can certainly.
And that might be something where we do some sort of hard pack, you know, table or whatever.
Yeah, we could always touch up that, that area a bit more with some gravel and do some plate compaction and make it a harder surface, or even stone dust. There's lots of options, but I will make a note to look at handicap spaces at the library.
I have a question on that, just while you're writing your note. We did finally enter in a written agreement with our abutter on the use of the driveway. Is that correct?
Not to my knowledge.
Does anybody else remember?
That's why the fence is there.
Because our, our entrance actually goes, which way does it go? Goes this way, goes this way? When you come in off the road, it's not a driveway. We only have a, an angled part, and so the abutter has given us permission to swing that out so we can actually drive in. Before we pave, we need to get something firm on that note.
Yeah.
Because pavement makes a whole different ballgame than gravel.
So is it an easement, or was it just a letter?
A right-of-way to the library is suspect?
I think it may have just been a letter of agreement.
I don't recall this at all.
It's probably from my older days.
The thing I recall was the access behind that building.
So Theresa can remember, but, but anyway, that's just something to look into.
You can help me find it.
It is with the current owner, though, of the abutting property. So it's been in the last.
Kathy Bruce.
Yeah, 10 years-ish.
And where is the septic system in regard to that right-of-way?
There isn't one there, it's across the street.
It's across the street.
Yeah, there is an effluent.
Talking about the shared, the line that goes.
Yeah.
Is that something, would give us some leverage?
Don't know, I mean, certainly, we've got plenty enough leverage on the effluent stuff, but.
Just wondering.
If you take away the access, there are problems. But I, I will look into any type of agreements that we have on that. I'd like to actually make it formal if we can, try to get it to be an actual easement if it's not just, if it's just a letter, I think we should go, go for the next step.
I just thought if we could put a note with that, so if we ever do decide to do something more, we're aware of that issue.
Because the property is for sale.
Yeah, it's for sale.
It's been for sale for.
Well, I know it's been for sale forever.
But if you could take that wedge and make it part of the library property, when a sale takes place.
That's right, it's better to get it taken.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Exactly. Good thinking.
Yeah, well, we have to talk about the septic as well, so I will talk with her about that at the same time, and we'll see if we can have a good conversation about how to square all that away.
Thank you.
Question on library. I agree with Bruce about trying to keep that parking surface gravel or stone dust. Environmentally, it's much better to go that way. And when you pave things, you create drainage issues and slopes that, and the abutting properties are very close, and you're not necessarily sure what's going to happen in that regard, and you certainly want to keep it away from the old foundation of that building. The, the budgeted contingency number, $25,000, I just want to make sure that's, that's not project contingency, this is library contingency for completion of the second-floor egress? Or is this part of the project number?
This is part of the project number. That's a very good observation. This is the breakout that I thought would be understandable and.
So this is how we're folding in that additional number we need to get a comfort zone for the project?
The full $75,000, yes, that we're looking at for the overall capital.
But if it is not used for contingency, then it will be used to finish off the work of the library?
Yes.
That's what the plan is.
Absolutely, yep.
Okay. So because I've been the big advocate for let's do the project right and finish it.
Sounds formal.
So, I've been really hard on that.
Since we're on that $75,000, we did set it up so that it is a building reserve, a municipal building reserve or contingency, however you want to look at it, so that it can be used interchangeably between those two buildings and perhaps others if we need. But the idea was that we wanted to set it up so that it had some flexibility and, and we could. But the library is actually the most risky part of this whole project because of the unknowns on the timbers and the roof. So, yeah, we might need a little bit more than that $25,000, but this is just a budget number, so.
If the fire company is successful, and the library chips in with a little bit of fundraising on its own, this may become moot.
I mean, I think that.
Or the pot will just be enlarged, and there will be discretionary money that we can decide on in terms of, in terms of the options that were in the building plan.
Yeah, I think we can pretty quickly spend $25,000 at the library for interior work. The egress is probably going to be 10 or 15 anyway. You know, so it's to get a steel.
And we can't use the upstairs until we get that egress, right?
Not for anything public.
Well, the underlying all this is when we got the bids, they came in right at our max.
Yep.
In terms of handling. And so our room for contingency under the, under the plan that was approved by voters was so tight that we're really actually asking for some additional contingency to finish that project. So in the interest of explaining that to citizens. citizens, that's really, relates to the project. And we've split it 25 to the library and 50 to the fire station, or 75 in whole, to use to make sure we complete that project in the manner that we anticipated. The bids came in, and the market, if you will, for construction was extremely, extremely good for contractors. So they took the opportunity to, I guess it's called an opportunity bid, actually, an opportunity cash bid or whatever. So that's really what that's for, is it lines up with the project. It's not to have extra play money.
Thank you. That's a great clarification.
Eric, is this a good time for me to ask you about the five-year plan? In that particular, anyway, I'm just asking.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay. So if you folks all look on the five-year planning horizon spreadsheet towards the back, we have, the library building reserve has $100,000 for 2020, but then we have a line, 1, 2, 3, 4 down, that says library building roof, and it has nothing. And I think the $100,000 should go on the roof line, not on the building line, because we're spending it on the roof, and we should revise the estimated cost from $30,000 to $100,000 because it more accurately reflects what we've done.
I agree with that in part. I think that it should be moved. However, the $100,000 is for the full replacement of all the timbers and the sheathing and some insulation. So the actual roof repair, replacing that standing seam metal roof would likely be, you know, a third or half the cost of that full project cost that we realized with this project. So I think you're absolutely right about moving that down into the, into the building line. For future expenses, I think you're right that we should look at that as well. But I would, I would think, and I don't know if 100 years is right for a metal roof. I certainly hope so. For a standing seam, anyway.
100 years, is what you just said?
Yeah.
Yeah. For a standing seam, maybe?
Too long.
50?
Better be more than 50. I mean, you can, you can get asphalt shingles that'll do that these days.
Oh, I wish they were on my house. So anyway, would we be okay with doing 50 and 50, Eric?
I think 50 sounds good, yeah. So I'll amend that, and drop it down, 50,000 down into the roof, and amend the, yeah.
And we probably ought to look into revising the roof number at some point. It doesn't have to be tonight, but the year replacement.
Yeah.
And then my other question was similar to that, and I won't take long here, but I looked up the lifespan of heat pumps, and I have heat pumps at my house, and so I know when I think I need to replace them. And you have a 20-year life. I think 15 is much more reasonable if we keep them maintained. I think we're going to be really surprised if we don't put in a shorter timeframe.
Yeah, I will adjust that to 15.
The industry standard says 10 to 30 years, with 15 being what you could call your average. So I think 15 is safer than 20.
Yeah.
I mean, if we're going to budget, I want to try and do it using the best knowledge, so. I'm done. Thank you.
Agreed. Thank you. I'll make that change.
Did they buy extended service with that? I bought extended service next to nothing. 10 years.
I don't believe so. I think it was just the installation and the purchase of the equipment. But we can check on that.
What I found is it's, every three years is your maintenance, and if you've sent in your warranty info, it's a really good warranty. We've already had one replaced under warranty, so...
Are we ready to move on to administration? I also want to make an observa-- oh, go ahead. I was just going to say, I'm not hearing much from this side of the table.
The subject here, this relates to the fire station, too. I thought that there are problems with the septic. Didn't think there were, when we talked about the project last year, and there are. And I don't know, because I've missed a couple meetings, what the issue is there. Are we replacing the septic? Because if we are, then the year changes here.
Yes.
That was another one of mine that I noticed.
Yeah, we are, we are going to be replaced, that full replacement.
And so doesn't the year change here?
It absolutely should.
Okay.
And it's full hardened replacement, right?
Hardened, yes, so it's...
Which means you can drive a heavy vehicle on top of it.
We can put a fire truck over the top of the new septic system, because it was only, it was only like a 10% increase in cost to be able to drive over it or not drive over it. And since it's a fairly small lot, we figured better safe than sorry. So that's what we put in the bidding. That's what we're getting.
Great, yes.
And so should some of the 710 be reflected in, I don't know, anyway?
Yeah, I better, I'll revise that. And actually, the septic costs was around, we did just, I actually just worked with the engineer to break that out because it was included with their site work quote. We were between 50 and $55,000 for the septic all in. And we should be able to be reimbursed for about half of that by other parties.
And share the system.
Yes.
Just, just to take the temperature of the meeting here, we've used 30 minutes on the first item. We have six more to go. Are you happy with that rate?
No, no.
Okay, so do you want me to have a little heavier gavel?
Yes.
Okay, let's go on to administration.
All right. Thank you, Bruce. For the FY '21 fiscal year, we do have a $10,000 expense for accessibility improvements planned. And I will just make a brief summary on this accessibility schedule that we have. We had initially tried to put the parking lot improvements out to bid, and that was another one that got thrown right back in our face, that prices coming in about double what they should have. So we decided to go a different route, and we're working now on the doors and access for the building because automatic openers are likely a better improvement than a slight grade change when it comes to access. So, but the important thing is that we have a three-year plan to make all of this happen. We'll be spending $12,000 this year, 12 to 15, depending, on making the two front doors and both of the main access doors to the first and second floor ADA accessible with a push button. Next year, we will be doing, finishing ADA access improvements to the bathrooms. The downstairs bathroom now is compliant, other than the openers. And the upstairs, we're going to have to do some remodeling to make that ADA compliant. But that, that's where we have this $10,000 basically to work on that second phase of door openers, and really the bathroom accessibility. So we're working kind of from the outside in, making the building more accessible. And then in future years, we see the accessibility improvements, another $10,000 for improvements and the parking lot. And I broke that up just because I think that we may need some additional improvements in the building, but I do believe that we can accomplish the parking lot grade adjustments in paving for that $25,000, and perhaps dipping into the 10 that we have for accessibility. But they are related, because we do need grade changes on the front of the building. So really, we have about $35,000 for that front portion of the building. Those bids that came in very high were in the 35 to $45,000 range. So my hope is that this three-year plan allows us to make the town office fully ADA compliant from parking lot into every, every accessible portion of the building, except for the stage, but that's...
Are the, looking at the five-year horizon, are the windows for energy efficiency?
Ask Teresa about that one. She's got a draft. It is for energy efficiency, and they're nearing the end of their life. They're vinyl, but they're not very good vinyl. And there's also some rigid plastic in there as well. They are pretty well spent, so we do need to replace those, yeah. We, also in FY '21, we have a $10,000 just general building reserve, because again, we have an old building. And I'm trying to build up a bit of a buffer, because we have been on fairly thin, thin reserves, and especially with using a lot of our current reserve for accessibility, I wanted to build back up some of those funds for other purposes. Any questions on...
Windows? It's a long way out. You're going to be cold for a long time. And $50,000, given the scope and what I know windows cost, that's not going to pay for it. So what I'm wondering is whether or not we retailer the capital expense plan to incrementally replace over a period of time, so it doesn't land on you as like a $100,000 line item. These are big, non-conforming windows. They're going to be custom-made. So wouldn't it be better if we picked the problem ones that are causing the most difficulty as far as staff is concerned, and deal with them over the next couple of years, and then incrementally do a room at a time, and cut the cost down, and spread it out that way, and get a better outcome, and more fuel efficiency while you're doing it?
I think there's some, I think it's a good idea.
I like the idea of making the staff more comfortable. It's different up here. I mean, it's going to help the whole building, but if you have people who are working in a room where you have draft, that's not good.
And little foot warmers that are turning the CMP wheel outside like at 90 million RPMs a minute, we're not affecting good, good cost management.
I will say it's not, it's not terrible, but it could use improvement.
But it could be better.
It could be better.
But let's just, let's just look at doing them over what the difference is.
Staggered replacement, yeah. I'll look at a staggered replacement schedule, and I will reflect that in the plan.
So we'll just stick that alternative in our thoughts?
Yeah.
Yes.
I think an alternative approach that could be considered is to first get quotes on doing the entire job, because that may turn out to be less per window than doing them individually.
Might be.
And to think of bonding it, so that you're spreading out the impact on the taxes over several years, and getting it all done at once if the numbers point in that direction. And another reason for looking at it, looking at it that way, give an example from the Conservation Commission, we did, we did not do wood harvesting this year, because for whatever reason, the quotes came in very unfavorably. And we would not be getting the revenue from that that we usually do. So we're holding off of that. We're going to try again in '21. By looking at it as, you know, the, giving consideration to doing the whole job on the windows at one time, you can test the market, and if this, if in 2021 or 2122, the economy is such that contractors are looking for work and are willing to give better pricing, you may be able to take advantage of that. You know, rather than doing one window in '21, you may be doing all the windows if the pricing is right. So just an alternative approach to think about.
Thank you, Marty. Let's move on to recreation parks and activities.
Okay. So fiscal year 2021, we have no capital expenditures for recreation parks and activities during this upcoming fiscal year. Significant maintenance on picking structures and storage buildings, but no capital level work. And that's to say that we are spending $3,000 to $4,000 in a couple of different areas. $3,000 on the ball field, $4,000 on work at the beach. That just doesn't rise to the level of what we consider a capital expense, so we're not talking about it tonight. It's included in the operating budget. On the five-year horizon, we do have some things that we would very much like to see brought in to the beach particularly. And I will say that these are, right now, very much wish list items, because with the expenditures that we expect to see to offset the operating costs this fiscal year, the FY '21, that reserve will effectively be brought down to next to nothing. And that is the result of several years of insufficient revenues to offset the cost of running that operation, and the fact that it is entirely funded by permit fees, which have been the same since 1984, I believe. So we're looking, and the select board has directed us to look actively at how to correct that problem. The two solutions, one is to double the permit fee, which is what, if you looked at inflation, it's almost exactly, it'd be like 85 bucks for a family. We're starting off by increasing that to $60 this year to test the waters. We've got a feeling that we might not get the same number of residents participating at that higher rate, which could further create a bit of a crisis for this operation. Right now, we're just having enough money coming in to cover operating expenses, not even address capital, or future plans, or playgrounds, or things like picnic shelters, or new storage buildings, and things like that. The other option that we do have, and that we're looking at quite actively, is the possibility of turning this back over to a partially tax-funded enterprise, whereby we have programming that brings in revenue that helps offset the cost, but the beach itself could potentially be free to residents. And they would maybe pay for extra services, like the kayak racks, or pay for tai chi on Saturday mornings, and that would help offset the cost. So there's a couple of things in works and in discussion. I'll let the board talk about more than if they choose. But I will say that as far as capital reserves go, we're getting very much towards the end of what we can do with that, with that beach without taking some drastic and different directions. As far as the rest of the recreation department goes, they do very well. They regularly have more revenue coming in than they expend. And so they have a healthy capital reserve of close to $20,000, I think by the end of FY '21. So they're doing pretty well, and we do have some storage needs, but they're well within the range of what we would have available on hand to cover them. The last thing I'll say is that to Ralph's point about spending what you, spending down those reserves, I think in future years, we're going to have to look at actually pulling money out of those funds to just reduce the tax burden, or reduce the cost of, you know, reduce the operating budget. So any questions, comments on recreation?
I do, but I'll let someone else go first.
Please go ahead.
Okay. So we've been talking about this, and I would be interested in hearing what you folks from the Budget Committee have as input in terms of if we take this on as a, a tax-funded rather than a user-fee-funded operation, how you might see that affecting the budget, especially in terms of capital. And Eric mentioned that we could have some programming that would bring in revenue, but I'm going to assume that if we're going to have a tai chi program, we're going to have a tai chi instructor, so we're going to have to pay them. So I don't know how much the revenue's really going to offset...
It'll be dollar in, dollar out.
I'm thinking it's probably closer to that. But part of the discussion that we've been having is that maybe we should look at the beach more like we look at the trails. We don't charge people to go on the trails. There's something that add to the value of the town, that cause people to want to live here or to move here, and is the beach another commodity like that, and we should be treating it that way? And if we want people to use it and it's dumpy, are they going to use it? If we improve the beach, like we've improved the trails over time, with a lot of volunteer labor, I might add, and time and equipment, and we might be able to do something similar like that at the beach, so it's not outrageously expensive. You know, but is that something that you folks can see a way dealing with budget-wise? Or do you see the budget as being so tight that there's no... I'm done.
Well, first of all, I can't remember how much, what, how many dollars the, this, the beach itself contributes in terms of operating costs. But I absolutely think it's an asset, it's a town asset, and it does enhance the value of the town. And if you incorporate it into the tax base, it's much more progressive. You're not leaving families who, on limited means, having to come ask for, you know, present themselves and ask for, you know, a reduced pass. So I would be all for that. And I do think you could have a beach committee, like, if you have a trails committee.
We're working on that, too.
And we can have a beach committee, but more of a beach working committee. And it might not, there might be people like me who wouldn't use the beach, but would love to work on the beach and do the outside kind of stuff.
Yeah, I don't know in terms of erosion control what the beach needs, because that's a major capital investment, I know. And it's not here, so maybe it's not an issue. But it could be a major issue at some point.
Yeah, erosion control's actually in, not... Yeah, erosion control's actually not in a bad place. A good portion of that has been hardened through a DEP-approved project several years ago? And we've been actively allowing to grow up the front section right near the water? And planting more rooty species, low-growth sumac and things like that? So we've been trying to work on that erosion piece pretty actively.
And the beach does not pay for itself right now? They're dipping into their?
They, they've been dipping into the reserve for the past three or four years? But the, the, one of the main contributors is the, the need for repairs? And the, the rent rise in the cost of, of labor? You know, minimum wage has gone up thirty percent or more, I think, in the past three years? I don't remember the exact math on it? But it's, it's, it's been impactful.
So Dennis isn't here tonight?
But he's a proponent.
And either he or I, or I don't know which of us is pushing this the hardest in terms of? I mean, I think it's a town gem and we should absolutely support it. I also think that if we had an erosion capital intensive situation come up? We'd be stuck with it anyhow.
Yeah, we would.
No, that's true. But you asked about.
Right, it's, it's, it's property that we own in town. We had a, a Realtor here talking the other night about a completely different issue? And he mentioned how he makes sure that when he has clients in his car? He drives right by that beach? He's probably not telling them that it's a fee-based and all that's? But it's, it's a gem? And, and I actually grew up in a town with a lot of beaches? And I think it's a great thing and an, and an asset to the community? That we should fold into our operating budget.
So we were? Go ahead.
Well, to your point about what that particular Realtor individual had to say? Driving by the beach? I did have a brief conversation with Eric a week or two ago saying? If we need to capitalize some improvements? Why wouldn't we avail some private enterprises? The opportunity to support that with some level of name recognition? Which, which might be to their benefit? And offset the cost of the taxpayers? If we choose to, to not charge membership passes and what have you? And just let fees offset to some extent? And I personally don't have any problem with, with asking people who think that it's a town benefit? And, and, and make a living on, on the quality of life in this town? Asking them to make a tax-deductible donation? Because we're a municipality? It's a tax-exempt donation? We have infrastructure we want to build down there? It should be part of our capital plan.
Yeah, well, I think I, I agree completely. We, we have fifty thousand dollars coming from the Fire Department to offset about ten percent of the cost of their building? Or maybe five? But it's still, it, it adds up? And absolutely, that's a good approach, yeah.
And have a sponsor board.
So what we've talked about, and I hope it's still moving forward? Is that we want to put a test question? A feeler question out on this year's warrant? Asking people, kind of a straw poll thing? You know, about changing the beach over to being what we've talked about? I don't know how to phrase it correctly.
Yeah.
So that then we would be able to go ahead and start budgeting for things next year? Because right now, the structure doesn't really allow us to do that? And so that's why we're feeling a lot of consternation? We can't just say, okay, we're gonna raise the money and do these projects?
Yeah. So, yeah, absolutely. And the, the article I have drafted is actually more, it's less of a straw poll? And more of a, do you support making the public, the beach a publicly assessable property? It's something like that. Language really is much more of an authorization to make that change? Allowing us next year to fund it through, you know, more diverse means?
And I suspect, I mean, the goal that you all set out for us was to hold assessments?
Right.
Yeah. The tax assessment. Wow, so, but this? You can tell me if I'm wrong? I don't think it would. I don't think it's material.
I would agree with that in large parts.
Percentage of budget is not a huge number.
It's about ten thousand dollars without accounting for capital? If we accounted for proper capital reserves and expenditures? It'd probably be in the order of fifteen thousand a year? Maybe a little bit more? So, certainly.
It's the same order of magnitude as the cemeteries, basically.
Yeah.
And, and if we didn't get any funding? You know, town funding?
And we do kind of charge for the cemeteries?
Yes.
Because if you buy, you buy a plot?
It's just a one-way in though.
Yeah.
Otherwise, you're gonna leave you on the side of the road for the crows.
But it's okay to have some sort of a funding mechanism associated with these things.
Yeah, sure.
So, I, I, one of the reasons I'm bringing it up? Is when we have our public hearing in about a month? We're also gonna be talking about the warrant articles? And that will be one of them? So I wanted you guys to have a heads-up on that? And we may have questions about, well, how are you going to pay for it? And so I think you've just had a little small discussion about that.
Let's move on to number four. Yes, please do.
Do we currently rent out the beach? Like for events?
We do. And that's another source of revenue that I think could be utilized more fully. I think the, the, that rental fee is probably the same as it was in nineteen eighty-four as well.
So it's probably twenty dollars for the weekend?
It's like twenty-five bucks, yeah.
And you pay for it with the empty beer cans.
We, we are, we are looking at, at those type of things as ongoing sources of revenue, yeah.
And that, that might fold in with some capital down the road? If you had some supporting structure there that allowed better opportunity for those kinds of rentals?
Yep, absolutely. So I will start on roads.
Okay.
For the FY21 budget? We have a hundred fifty thousand dollars for paving for Plains Road? And some for reserve? I don't believe that we would be using the full of fifty? But we do put that in every year? So that we can maintain our paving cycle? We have every road in town that's paved and unpaved on a maintenance schedule? And with anywhere between twelve and twenty years for the replacement? Or the resurfacing with a one-inch overlay of asphalt? In the case of paved roads? And so that level of expenditure will need adjustment every couple of years? Due to inflation and things like that? But I think we're in a very good spot with our road paving program? And Plains was recommended for, for paving this year by the Road Committee? I will add that Church Road is probably in about the same condition? If not a little bit worse in places? However, we are trying to wait on that for a year or so? Until we know about whether or not we will be getting a sidewalk grant? That we can then utilize and do those things in conjunction? Unfortunately, this year, in January, we did find out that we did not get it this year? We've been in the, in the pool for several years? But nobody got it? There's no more, there was no additional funding coming in? And so we're in a good spot if and when more federal funding comes our way? Torsey Pond Bridge repairs? I have a number here of seventy-three thousand five hundred? That actually represents the cost that we have from our preferred contractor? Plus a twenty percent contingency? This is something that we had been putting away for five, ten, fifteen thousand dollars a year? Over the past two or three years? But again, the cost of this work is, is coming in greater than what we anticipated? But fortunately, we have a road reserve that we can use to help cover that cost? Reserve savings for the Salt Sand Shed? Fifty thousand dollars? This is similar to what we had put in last year for this? We did put this out to bid as well? And that was another project that came in about twice what the engineers had estimated? And so this one has a lot of uncertainty around it? I think we, we will likely go forward with a bid that includes a repair or replace option? I think repairs likely would run in the a hundred thousand dollar range? Replacement would likely be in the five hundred thousand dollar range? So, we would definitely be looking at, at bonding that perhaps in either case? But that's one we have to try again on because of the results of that, of that initial bid process? We do have several sample documents and designs from other municipalities that have recently done this? A lot of municipalities at the same time built storage structures? When DEP began pushing that mandate? And they're all coming to do at about the same time? So we have other examples to readily available to work with for that? That one I said is, I'm hoping to pursue that in the, in FY22? But the savings should be happening to help reduce the, the burden? Either we could pay for the repairs outright? Or reduce the actual amount of borrowing we have to do for any, any bond? Church Road Sidewalk Design and Engineering? Again, this is one where we have made some progress? We're in a good position? But I do want to be in the best position possible? If federal coming, federal funding does come through? And having some design work done upfront? To at least perhaps determine which side of the road would be most cost-effective? Perhaps hold a couple of community meetings? It could also be a step forward? If it turns out that in a couple of years? We just, we've realized that there is no money coming? And we decide we want to do this project ourselves? It could give us some initial momentum to, to do that if, if necessary? But at the very least, it'll help with grant funding? LED streetlights? This is very exciting? We're looking at twenty thousand dollars to convert all of our streetlights to LED? And purchase the, the physical asset from CMP to? I think the payback we were looking at was four to five years? So with a light bulb that has a twenty-year lifespan approximately? So, I think a wise investment? And a, a direction that many other local municipalities are heading? And that, that would have some upfront cost? Included with this number is the option of adding three, three to five additional streetlights? I've already had two specific requests for streetlights? The last time this happened? The Select Board was given the discretion to install, I think it was three streetlights? Wherever they thought it was most appropriate? So, I think that that type of?
Go crazy.
Discretion.
With any requests, we'll pick three.
Seems, seems appropriate.
I see a lottery with dollars attached.
Again, the five-year horizon? We have the Salt Sand Shed showing up between one hundred and five hundred thousand dollars? And that's gonna take some work in the next year to determine exactly how and what that's gonna look like? We thought we had a good plan? And it got turned on its, its head a little bit? And then the Salt Sand Shed asphalt repaving? If we put the new, a new building back in the same location? Or if we repair the building and continue to use it? We will need to do some work on that apron that exists in front of the building? And I think the ten thousand seems appropriate? Outside of that? We do have some unknown expenses? Roughly a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars? To remove and safely block the Mill Stream Bridge? Or Giles, Giles Road Bridge? The cost to actually rebuild that and reopen it? Would be much, much more than that? So I can't in good conscience even recommend that as an option?
And that the residents don't really want it?
They don't want it. They don't want it. The folks on Thunder Castle, they really want it? But they can drive an extra quarter mile and be okay, I think.
And the Fire Department was fine with it staying closed?
That's true, yes.
And that was our biggest concern operationally.
Emergency management.
Does it, does that in, just, does that include a pedestrian replacement that bridge?
I think that it could. The demolition of that bridge would be costly? I, I think that?
Cause I still, I don't think we need to get into a big discussion on it? Walkability is still, I think, an important issue?
It is key. And the, the, the bridge that's down over Mill Stream? That is there now? Was from a piece of, I think, one or two pieces of I-beam steel? That were twenty-five feet long? That were just set in place? And they cleated them together with, with pressure-creted wood? And it's a great solution? We could do something, I think, just like that? Probably for ten thousand dollars?
Oh, it was cheaper than that? Cause it was all volunteer labor?
Yeah.
Just the materials.
I'll lift one, yeah.
Some of us may be too old to do it by the time it comes around.
Yeah.
At the end of this? You have a slide where we're gonna talk about overall? So we can talk about bonding and timing on some of these unknown things? Rather than do it now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions on roads and infrastructure? Does that look like a good direction?
Just a couple of quick things? We had twenty-five K bonded for the sidewalk? I mean, excuse me, the, the parking lot in front of the Masonic Hall for this year? Are we just gonna encumber that and roll it into the next year?
We don't encumber? But we, we could? So I've got a, I've got a meeting scheduled for April first with DOT to go over that? There's a chance we could pull something together? But I think that the most likely solution, result is going to be that that will carry over? It'll stay in the carry-forward fund? And we'll have to use it in the future year?
All right, so it's not gonna go away just because we didn't spend? We had to, yeah. This one I like.
Yeah. This one, this one you would?
This one I like?
No, it's okay.
It's a pending project, so now it's okay?
Anything else?
I talk out of both sides.
Just justify.
Well, arrest him, yeah.
Anything else?
Just noting, for record.
The LED, the LED conversion stuff?
Yes.
We're gonna own these things? Have we projected what the cost for maintenance will be?
Yes, minimal. And we do have a number of companies that we could work with? One of the things that is being done regionally is? We could, we have several towns? Gardner, Randolph? I think Bethel might be doing it? Not Bethel, Belgrade?
Yeah, a bunch of them.
A bunch of them? So, this is a low-demand service? So they're looking at doing a regional contract?
Okay.
With a service provider? So we have a small inventory of bulbs? And we have someone we can call and they can?
Can we stockpile the bulbs and buy a bulk? Or would we not even bother to do that?
I'm, I'm not sure we'd even bother doing that, yeah.
Cause we don't have enough to bother to do it?
We don't, we have about forty streetlights.
So it would just be an operating line item based on experience for year to year?
Yeah. Minimal, minimal expense.
And the lifespan and replacement date needs to be changed on those? Because you said twenty years? So it'd need to be twenty forty-one?
Oh, what did I put?
You put twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-one?
Oh, yeah, I think I just?
I'll be here to remind you.
Thanks, yeah.
I'm that details person.
You are, and I appreciate it.
You're the justifying on the details.
Scary.
Just, um, timing on LEDs.
Transfer station?
All right. We have an MSW trash compactor? That is actually probably about a year and a half beyond its useful life? We've patched it together and kept it going? That's going to be about forty thousand dollars to replace? We also have the backhoe lease? That normally we would include with capital leases? But the, the transfer station being a special entity that we share with two other municipalities? The cost of? We do have to keep all of this separate? And so we have a separate capital lease item line for the transfer station? That's a, we did get a five-year lease? We made the first year payment this year? So this is actually year two of, of, of the lease? So we'll have a, a quick turnaround on getting that paid for? With the five-year horizon? We have the, the likelihood of repaving the access road loop? The building roof will need to be reshingled? For the, the small building? That houses the swap shop and the restroom? We need likely to purchase a number of open-top roll-off containers? And those, we own four? And those are, I think they're about five, six thousand dollars apiece? And the compactor roof construction is something that we want to do? And we will probably discuss sooner rather than later? And I, and I do want to point out that with this year's and next year's budget for the transfer station? We are drawing the reserve down to very, very lean levels? And I think that either a lease agreement? Or perhaps even bonding might be appropriate next fiscal year? I think a, a lease this year might even be in order to stabilize that account? And give a little bit more balance for us to work with? So we can talk about more on that at the end of the?
Lease of what?
Meeting? Or the, the compactor? We could potentially work with the Escoguen Bank on a equipment lease for that? I think, anything else?
Would the compactor roof include covering the demo?
It could.
Okay.
It could.
Because that's been on the topic of consideration for a decade plus?
It, it has? And one of the things that we're actually having a good, positive? It has and one of the things that, we're actually having a good, positive discussion with staff about the fact that the height of that and the cost of that could be drastically reduced if we were to limit compactor trucks coming into the facility and send them directly to Nordwalk rather than having them come and drop off at the station. We could still meet the residents' needs very well and we only have one commercial hauler that actually uses maybe infrequently a second, a compactor truck. So the idea of having to do a 20-foot roof as opposed to perhaps a 10-foot roof, the engineering around that is very different and the cost is very different. So I guess what I'm saying is we're having some positive discussions about the functional operation of the facility and how it impacts the capital needs that we have.
And I had a question about the scale installation because we have decided we weren't doing the scales, but we had budgeted for it, I don't know, maybe six years ago.
Yeah.
And I think maybe it's time to take it off?
I agree with that.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
And then residents will know that that money was spent on other improvements because the scale wasn't deemed to be
We did all the due diligence on it and determined not to do it, so this is just sitting around.
We don't have the volume to justify
Well, and there's a lot of maintenance and it needs a redesign at the whole station to use a scale and we're not, that's beyond our ability.
The payback versus what, how we're operating doesn't make sense.
And we have a much better system going right now of, the transfer station's operating really well in the last six months.
Yeah, we talked about the skills when we were losing money for what we were taking in, what we were spending to take it out, we're not doing that.
And operationally, it would be, I mean, people complain now we're having to slow down and talk to somebody at the gatehouse. Imagine having to go around twice to pay somebody at Way and then pay.
That could have been a happy place.
So anything on transfer station additionally?
Has the budget committee considered renting the cans versus buying new ones outright?
I don't believe you've discussed that. I will say that in our operating budget, we do have can rental for the octagons. We actually do own our two recycling compactor bags, but the haulers do so much damage to them that they, and the cost of repair
They get beat up beyond recognition.
Yeah, but the cost of repair is astronomical because it's a very heavy, very awkward piece of machinery or equipment. So, yeah, we've, I've basically walked away from owning those cans, the large ones. The little ones, I think we may still have value, particularly if we stop smashing them.
But the 40-yarders, we don't want to own them anymore.
We don't want to own the 40-yard roll-offs anymore, the octagons.
But now practice has changed, we won't be banging the cans with the new backhoe.
Yeah, so the roll-offs still make, the roll-offs still make sense, I think. They were more, they were more, the return, we can keep a 20-year life on those and it makes sense.
Okay.
The octagons, no way. Those things are done in 10 years, eight to 10 years, so, yeah.
I just have a quick question.
Yeah.
And Wayne and Fayette, do they budget in detail for the transfer station operation or do they just budget their contribution?
The latter.
The latter.
Yeah, they budget us the contribution.
And they only get charged what we actually spend, so if we budget that it's going to cost them 100,000 dollars, but it only costs us 92 for their share, they're only paying the 92 over the course of the year, so we're not collecting extra and giving it back.
Absolutely right, yeah.
Perhaps that final payment is an adjustment in the last quarter, correct?
Eric and Teresa do it ongoing.
Teresa just bills them for what the actuals are, right? And then we subtract the revenue and that's how it, that's how it rolls, right?
And Fayette and Wayne are very happy with the agreement that we've made with them and the use, and the residents are very, especially of Fayette, very happy.
Yeah, and we do a detailed calculation for them, so they have an estimate of what their, usually a very reliable estimate of what their costs are going to be. Question, Marty, thanks.
They know all the details, though.
Yeah, I know there's
There's a committee with the three town managers and select board members from each town.
All right, so moving on to fire department, the fire station expansion will be completed. We had, like I said, we had a great pre-construction meeting last week or the week before, Ralph? I don't, it's all
It's all
Yeah. But they've got a very aggressive schedule, they want to start earthwork this month and by the looks of it, my gardens have exposed, my herbs are growing practically. It's a, I think, a good year to get an early start.
Mud ruts are hard, it's time.
Yeah, so they're expecting that they'll have the project completed by September, October of this year, which is, which is great.
It's a fast-track deal.
I always questioned that, I said I really want to have it completed by December and we'll set that as the contract completion date, but this one will span this fiscal year and the FY twenty-one. And again, we did appropriate 75,000 dollars additional for contingency and project alternatives.
And this, you had your kickoff meeting last week, you said, is that what you
Pre-construction, yes, yep.
I have heard that supply, delivery, access to supplies for construction is slowing down.
Already?
I'm sure it will with the
Already.
Before the real busy season even hits.
This is due to the coronavirus stuff, so
Are you making those trusses in China?
Yeah, something to be aware of.
We send our raw materials to China, they make it, bring it back, it's cheap.
Well, I just, it could
Ridiculous.
It could expand that, absolutely, yeah. The fortunate thing is S.J. Wood is actually out of Winthrop and their proprietor lives, actually has a house in Reed Field, so did not know that prior to the bid, I'll say that upfront, but I knew that they were out of Winthrop, I didn't know he had a house here, but in any event, I think we've got a good contractor, I'm looking forward to that. We've discussed the whole idea of the contingency and project alternatives needing to be completed, the 75,000, the same as with the library in order to complete that work. Five-year horizon, engine 61 replacement, 400,000 dollars. I've been talking with Lee about how to maybe push that off some and that's going to be a difficult discussion, I think, all around about how often and how
I thought he had already pushed it off, I thought last
Yeah, he kind of changed his mind on me. We've had a couple of discussions on it and it is, it's a little bit, it's about three years off right now, but he is actually working with a town out of state that is looking to donate perhaps a used piece of equipment that could fill that slot for us. So there's a chance we could have a significantly reduced cost there or no cost, but a shorter horizon. Instead of replacing it in 30 years, we might replace it in 15 or something like that, so.
So on this, the last sheet, the bonding graph?
Yes, yep.
I mean, you're showing this bond and this is for the truck.
The truck, yeah, starting
Hitting in '22, is that because we have to order it in '22?
Yeah, we would have to order it in '22, it takes about a year to deliver.
You order the cabin chassis and then you outfit it.
Right, well, we want it in '24, so do we really order it in '22? That was a question I had when I looked
Well, it took longer than a year last time.
Oh, it takes, can take a couple of years.
They said a year, but it was longer.
It's always
Always, yeah.
And also, there's the same issue with the septic in this.
Yes. 61, timeframe, and septic.
So if we were to buy a used truck from a wealthier community, how old would it be and what would that duty cost?
I think it really depends. Right now, Ralph's, not Ralph, that was the, should be Lee, don't tell him I said that.
He would not like you.
No, Lee was suggesting that there's a chance that it could be free and it would be potentially just a few years old because of
Greenwich, Connecticut having a fire sale, no pun intended?
So, but that's only a possibility and I wouldn't put money on it at this point, but, yeah, just like anything else, donated equipment, we can find a place for it in Reed Field, I think, if it's appropriately inspected and outfitted and all that, yeah. And then we have just general equipment reserve of 10,000 dollars. Because we combined the fire department physicals, water holes, tower sites, I think that was in there, yes, it was, and the equipment reserve for like SCBA and things like that as well as the truck repair reserve, we do need to continue to put money into this account to make sure that we have funds for things like SCBA or unplanned large maintenance on a truck that could, a pump could be 40,000 dollars. So that reserve is ongoing and I think that level of 10,000 dollars is probably fair. We might want to look at upping that in the future, but right now, I think with the expenses on the building itself, we're better off leaving it a little bit lower.
So what is the cumulative number as the reserve stands now?
We have that, or we will have that, let me look on this page here. At the end of FY twenty-one, we are looking at a fire department cumulative reserve of 61,500 roughly.
So I just want to clarify that I spoke earlier about the two projects, the building projects being a total of 75 in this coming budget to address those contingency issues because of the tightness of the bids and everything. It's actually, it's not 75, it's 100, it's 75 for the fire department and 25 for the library, is that correct?
That is, I guess, but one of the things I'm showing, because we had the alternates that were added to the project at the end, those did add some additional costs, so beyond the contingency, so, yeah, you're right to say that it is 100,000, including the reserve and the
And the alternates.
Additional alternate components that were needed for the fire station, yes.
And it's, I mean, our explanation to the public is that things cost more than we had hoped they would because of the economy, but it was much less than a year ago when we first put it out to bid and it was almost double. Now we got it very close to what we wanted.
But by the same token, we had engineers here telling us, and I remember asking them how sure they were. Oh, we're sure, we do this all the time. And we had an
We've had many discussions about that.
Well, and there were people here listening to that.
Eric has to be diplomatic, I don't.
It was very distressing to me because I
It was very disappointing.
I had expected that to happen and they were quite, you know, vociferous in their argument. I know we're disappointed with that firm, et cetera, et cetera, but to me, there's a, there's a problem in selling it to the taxpayers, you know, and getting them to believe that we have, you know, a sound basis on which we're planning these projects and then it's like, I mean, you can't plan for something like we're raising now.
We did have a sound basis, I would say, it just didn't
We had bad numbers, we started
Well, we didn't know the economy was going to be as good as it was, that we would have such high employment and so builders statewide, no project is coming in at what they thought it would be because they can't hire enough workers.
They were way off.
It's a universal problem from the state on down.
They were way off, though.
I'm willing to vote for that and move on.
I think that more than, more than the impact of the economy
It wasn't your need to Reed Field, let's put it that way.
The bottom line, I think, is that Ellen's, we need to recognize, we need to explain as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I think budget differently in the future for other large-scale projects. And I think it is a, one thing that I'm actually looking forward to with establishing this municipal building reserve is that we can then perhaps put contingency funds into that reserve for large projects and, you know, have that available to cover some of this stuff if it comes up as bad as it did this time, so.
Maintenance?
Yes. We have capital equipment leases of 16,150, that is, I think, the fourth or the fifth payment for the Bobcat sidewalk machine, which I absolutely love, that thing is awesome. It does great work, it gets use of the transfer station.
We should let some taxpayers drive that thing around.
No way, no way.
I want to, I want to, I want to do some sidewalk, union
We want it to last a long time.
I'm a skilled operator.
Yeah, it's a, it's a great piece of equipment, worth every penny, I'll say. We are also putting in 15,000 dollars into an equipment reserve. This is a general equipment reserve for things like the truck, any large expenses for plows or you can see some of the things coming up in the five-year horizon. I think that this 15,000 dollar plug this year will actually bring us up to a level where I won't be recommending anything more than a sustenance-level replenishment of that reserve as we move forward because we've gotten to the point where we could more or less replace a large piece of equipment in our inventory without having to have a major tax impact. On the five-year horizon, we have the John Deere zero-turn mower, around 15,000 for that, GMC pickup. We buy those at auction or through dealerships for just a little bit of money and we get really good use out of them. The one we have now is actually in extraordinary condition, I think we only paid about 6,000 or 7,000 dollars for it, so, but they only have an estimated lifespan of about five or six years before we start looking at repair costs getting to be higher, so we do have that in the plan. And again, the plowing sander, those things get beat up, they get a lot of salt on them and they have a fairly short five-to-10-year life outside of regular maintenance. And then unknowns, we really don't have much, we've got a pretty good handle on what we have in inventory and what the replacement schedules are.
Great.
Budget summary, right now we have about 537,000 dollars in total capital expenditures and reserve appropriations and I did want to make sure that I made that distinction, that some of these funds that we talked about are planned on being expanded immediately, some we're putting away for future years to perhaps offset, to smooth out the budget or pay for any other, I'll stop with that. Offsetting revenue, we do have 194,700 dollars in use of designated funds. Every year we look at that and try to pull what we can responsibly to offset some of these capital costs. Oftentimes, we've been putting away for two or three years or more, in the cases of like the cemetery where we put away 5,000 every year, we might be 10 years down the road where we pull out 50,000 dollars to pay for a project. So we do use those designated funds and actively use them. We also have 25,000 dollars in donations coming in in addition to what we had originally projected for the project, so I wanted to make sure we accounted for that. We also have use of undenominated funds. I don't know the exact number on that because we have, I think, maybe 150 right now, I'd have to look at the actual budget spreadsheet, but whatever that number is, in theory, it could be spread over the entire budget for every department and it wouldn't be right to accrue it just to the capital reserves even though the numbers sometimes match up well, but we do use some of the designated fund to offset the cost of these expenses and of course, tax dollars make up the difference. And this year, we don't have any bonding or leasing projected currently. Like I said, I do want to talk about more the transfer station and if that's appropriate to look at for that expense. And that's what I had for my general presentation on capital expenditures and I'll leave it to you folks where you want to head with the discussion from here.
Were you going to go over this?
That's a great place to start.
This is a really good chart.
Yeah, so
So we're looking at bonding.
The last page in the packet and I'm going to try to pull it up here on the
And can I ask a clarifying question that relates to that? For me, it's at the beginning. So when we're listing things in the five-year plan, we're putting the total cost in for a year, not the amount that we're actually going to spend in a year? Because you're putting the amount you're spending each year on this sheet?
This is
I'd have to, I'd have to think about that one, I'm not sure I
Okay, for instance, we have the fire truck in 2024, it's 400,000, which spikes our capital spending to 616.
Yep.
And I'm not comfortable with a CIP that has this up and down.
Oh, yeah.
I would rather see the 40,000 for 10 years put into this
Incrementally spread out.
This plan as well as this chart.
Well, that's where it shows up in the budget, in that service.
Yeah, so, yeah, I come back and forth on that one.
And so that's why I'm asking, because I want the opinion from you folks also, because I know you do very large budgeting projects and what is the appropriate thing?
Well, this is showing, the five-year plan shows you when you're going to write the check, right?
Whether you borrowed or not.
Regardless of how you fund it.
Right.
So you know that in So you know that in four years or whenever, three years, we need a fire truck.
Okay.
And so we plan for that. And when you are looking at the budget, you realize, and you guys say, "Don't raise the tax, the mill rate," that you have to have that in mind, that we're going to have this giant expenditure coming up in four years. And so you have to sort of figure out how to balance, Erica, Teresa have to figure out...
It's kind of like, it's kind of like you have to look at different things in different ways, yeah.
Yeah. But this shows you the burden of the debt over...
Over time.
Over time.
Yeah, I basically did a 12-year, showing the past year, the current fiscal year, the coming fiscal year, and then 10 years beyond that. Again, this, this doesn't show the fact that we might bond that fire truck or I guess it does show the one fire truck in 2022 because we know that's going to get, if it gets purchased, it will be bonded. But anything that's really outside of that five-year horizon probably won't show up here and shouldn't show up because budgeting beyond five years is, especially for capital, is kind of a crapshoot.
Makes no sense.
Yes, yeah.
So I guess my question then, Ellen hit the nail on the head, is do we show the expense over time in this sheet?
I don't think so.
Yeah, I wouldn't think so either because I think it's confusing and it's awkward to have to split between those two views, the one of what is the actual tax impact, the dollar impact that affects debt service and things like that. But I think it is important and to show just the year of the expense because there's so much going on in that spreadsheet and there are certain categories where we're putting away $5,000 a year into a reserve. I think it could just get a bit more muddled if we're... I'm just looking at it as a, that's the year of the expense, that's what we're spending and then we have to, as Ellen said, figure out how to accommodate that with the actual budget and debt service.
So when you explain the budget to the public, we have debt in there now and we can explain that this was a, you know, I don't know, however many millions of dollars investment that was made in whatever year it is and our debt service every year for the next 20 years is $300,000 or whatever it might be.
This just isn't reflecting your funding mechanisms. Because if the general public looks at this, maybe it just needs a note that talks about this is not the funding, this is the actual outlay.
Right, outlay is a great...
Yeah, I mean, we owe the money in that year.
Yeah, and that's okay.
How we choose to finance it is, you know...
We could win the lottery.
Great, by getting a truck donated.
I will say that I think that...
A town would need a tax rate on it.
We could, we could modify the debt service, long-term debt schedule to include more projections. I mean, I could, I know that in the next 10 years, we're going to have a few more things coming up that are, that are debt funded. I could look at those and say, "We're going to plan on a 3.5% interest rate. We're going to plan on each of them being 15 years," and we could build that out and show what it looks like. It would...
Wouldn't be real.
It wouldn't be real, but it could be something that would...
But I kind of like to look at this and know we have no debt right here. This is a good time to buy something, you know?
Yeah.
If you put, could have, should have, would have been there.
Do a tax cut.
Yeah, I like to be able to say, "This is a good time."
Well, but we talked about, for instance, a sand and salt shed and that's in there in one year, but it's not in here on the bonding. And that sand and salt shed causes a huge spike in 2022. So I think if we're going to put it in there, we ought to put it in this picture also.
I agree, I agree with that.
So if you're going to be in that five-year window, I'd like to see how we're going to fund it in the same five-year window on the back.
Yeah, I did leave that one...
Maybe that's better?
I did leave that off because I don't know whether we're going to replace it or repair it.
Yeah, you're not even sure what we're doing yet.
I'm not even sure what we're doing with it, yeah.
We don't have order approval for these projections. They're projections at this point.
Exactly, I understand.
And it's going to scare the heck out of people to see some of these spikes when they haven't had a chance to bless it yet.
Well, you know, it might be better to leave the fire truck off of this because this is our actual debt.
Yeah, you're actually mixing things.
You grab those actuals, yeah, then take all the projected stuff out of there.
You know, I've made this point before, debt is nothing to be afraid of. That is good.
Exactly, right.
So you can see where it drops down in 2022. There's plenty of room to take on debt to finance important capital projects like a fire truck and/or a salt and sand shed.
Or as Marty said, the windows even.
Yeah.
Whatever it might be.
Yeah, we'll look at both options.
And we could have two sheets. You could have the one that you're saying, this is the actual debt that we have, and you could have a second sheet that is your projections. So for planning purposes, for what we're all looking at, going out, you can see that, okay, we can't really buy that in that year because we have too much debt then. We have to wait a year or we can get it earlier than we thought.
I think that's a very good point. In terms of explaining debt service to our residents, I think we have to be careful when we say that we have room to incur more debt. Because we don't want people to get the impression that we're just waiting for chances to spend their money.
Just waiting to sign a check.
Yeah, I think, I think, exactly.
And we can bear it in the debt.
Right, I think it's a matter of the way, the way you explain it has to be.
So we'll have you do that, Marty.
Yeah. Don't have me doing it.
And we have needs, we have to schedule those needs so that they don't overwhelm the taxpayer.
And what this does is it allows us, it allows us to try to calculate the capacity for that kind of bonding and... Kind of service, debt service.
Responsibly.
Responsibly.
And it smooths out.
And this is what the school district has not done.
I was waiting for that, there it is.
At least this time.
At least this time.
8:07.
Next Wednesday evening.
Yeah, there we go.
It's the joint, it's the four, select board, school board joint meeting.
It's a fun show.
We're all very kind and polite. It's not a nasty meeting, I don't think.
I don't know, this will be my first one.
Oh, well, it has not been in the past. I mean, we say things that we probably don't, other people don't want to hear, but I think that goes both directions, but it's very nice.
I'm very supportive of everything that school does, just they made a mistake, I think, with that particular bond.
Yep.
A lot of heads bobbing up and down.
Okay.
I feel really comfortable with what we've done tonight. Thank you for letting me spout as much as I did.
You guys have done a great job. Thank you.
Yep.
It's these guys.
Professional help does most of the...
And Teresa as well.
It comes from the grassroots.
I waved in that direction, too. May not have been obvious.
So can we assume that you folks are kind of winding down on your meeting schedule now? Have you pretty much...
We have just a few more reviews for a, for the complete, complete draft. But yeah, the select board is actually looking at the first, the first complete, final budget and warrant draft. It's not a final, it's, we've been in development, we're going to continue to be in development for another month, but we're starting to get to the point where we're nailing things down and setting a rigid structure as much as possible and whenever we can. So that, that's going to be happening both with the select board and the budget committee. And I probably should have brought a copy of that schedule with me, but yeah, it's going to be wrapping down in the next, the next, basically by the end of this month, we will be done.
Congratulations.
So is everybody all set? We're in workshop mode, so we're out of session.